All right. The appointed hour of six thirty haven't been reached. I call this meeting to order. My name is Steve Judge. As Chair of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals, I welcome everybody to this meeting of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapters thirty eight, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Amherst zoning board of appeals is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But the public can listen to the proceedings by clicking on a link in the town's webpage. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A and article ten. Special permit granting authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw. This public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the regular members of the ZBA who have been panel for consideration of the items on tonight's agenda. I'm Steve Judge. I'm here. Mr. Langsdale?
Here.
Ms. O'Meara? Ms. Parks?
Yeah.
Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
And associate ZBA members, Ms. Waldman?
Here.
Mr. Barrick? Mr. Greeney? And Mr. Meadows? Also in attendance is Maureen Pollock, planning planner, Christine Brestup, planning director. Nate Malloy, senior planner. Dave Waskevich, building inspector. John Witten of KP Law Firm and Rob Mora is also in attendance. And I see that Ms. O'Meara is here as well. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter forty eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth. For the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff. Each petition is heard but heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or additional information. After the board has completed his questions, the board may seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, present your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. I want to remind the applicant, my fellow board members and the public to seek recognition from the chair before speaking. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered. Followed by public meetings. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. The following is the statutory timeline for ZBA action on comprehensive permits. Within forty days from the closing of a public hearing. The ZBA must render a decision that is deny, approve, or approve with conditions based on majority vote. Within fourteen days of its decision, the ZBA must file a copy with the town clerk. And within twenty days from the date of the ZBA decision is filed with the town clerk, the public can appeal the ZBA's decision. I want to review the ways in which the public can be informed about and comment on this application in addition to these public hearings. Residents can sign up to be notified of any additional information recorded by the town concerning this application through the notify me feature on the town website. Copies of all submissions can be found on the town website. Go to the ZBA page, click on the link for one thirty-two North Hampton Road. That link will bring you to a page which allows you to navigate all the public information regarding this application. Public comments can be submitted on the one thirty-two North Hampton Road page. Or email to Maureen Pollock, planner at P O L L O C K M at hammersma.gov. Amherst Media will not be broadcasting tonight's hearing, however, check their website for information on when it will be rebroadcast. Or you can view a recording of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel. Tonight's agenda is as follows. A public hearing to consider ZBA twenty twenty thirty-nine Valley Community Development Corporation. One thirty-two North Hampton Road. Request a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty B. To construct a new two and one-half story residential multifamily building. Containing twenty-eight small studio apartments and related common areas. On an approximate zero point eight eight acre property. Located at one thirty-two North Hampton Road. Map fourteen C parcel eight. General residents RG and educational ED zoning districts. This meeting is continued from October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Tonight's order of business is as follows. First, we'll have public comment. Secondly, we'll review and possibly approve findings. Next, we'll review and possibly approve waiver requests, review and possibly approve conditions. Other items that ZBA chair deems appropriate, and then final deliberations regarding the application. There will be a general public comment period on items not the subject of this hearing tonight. Since the October fifteenth public hearing, the board has received the following submissions. A draft decision document from staff, including proposed findings, proposed waivers, and proposed conditions. A set of plans from the applicant entitled revised permit plan set dated ten twenty-two, twenty twenty. A parking management plan from the applicant. Comments from the applicant on the draft decision document. Additional comments received from October, public comments received from October fifteenth. Until October twenty ninth. Francis Goy's floor, floor. Comments submitted via email dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Annie Burton comments submitted via emails October twenty first. Anonymous comments submitted via the town website October twenty first. Anonymous photographs submitted via the town website October twenty first. Steve George comments submitted via the town website October twenty third. And Barbara Wilbur comments submitted via memo dated October twenty eighth. Let me just have one word about the order of tonight's business. We did not have time for public comment during our last public hearing, so that will be the first order of business tonight. After that, we were going to describe, discuss, and vote on proposed findings. At our September fifteenth meeting, every finding was read into the record. Changes from the findings reviewed by the board last week contained in the draft decision documents are primarily technical, grammatical, or were accepted by the board on the fifteenth. I will break up the findings by broad subject matter, and we will discuss the vote on any amendments to the findings at that time. When we complete the review of the draft findings, we will consider a motion to approve the findings. We will follow the same procedure for consideration of waivers and then for conditions. Next, we will consider a motion to close the public hearing. If the board feels that they are ready to render a decision on the application tonight, the public hearing will be closed and we will open a public meeting. If we open the public meeting tonight, the board will consider and discuss a motion to approve the application for a comprehensive permit. Are there any questions regarding tonight's order of business? Okay, the first order of business is public comments on the comprehensive permit application. If you wish to speak, please use the raised hand function on your screen. The staff will unmute your microphone. Please give your name and address for the record. You will have about three minutes to make your statement. Remember to address your comments to the board. Maureen, do we have anybody who?
Yes.
Wants to comment?
We have a KS. Hi KS.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm a neighbor to the development.
State your name and your address.
Thank you. I would prefer not to give my name or address, but I'm a close neighbor to the development. I support this development to provide affordable housing and would like to thank the board for their careful review. I would like to ask the board to formally consider and vote on making this a smoke-free property. In doing so, I would like to ask them to consider the health impacts of smoking. And the proximity of their planned smoking area to a smoke-free campus, an athletic facility, and a frequently used public space. The board did note two meetings ago that they would consider and vote on the possibility of making this smoke-free. Taking into account the public comments that they've heard and the many other successful smoke-free developments across town. I hope that they will follow through on that tonight. As a close neighbor, I personally feel that the health benefits of a smoke-free development are clear and hope the board will vote in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wilbur?
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a moment to read the memo that I submitted. With regards to the trees that line our property on the west side. We want those trees down. I appreciate for some that riding up the hill, it looks nice. But as you can see from the pictures that I've included, the impact upon us as a butter. I just realized I didn't say my name and where I was from. You didn't catch me, Maureen. Barbara Graham Wilbur, one twenty-six North Hampton Road, an immediate butter, a butter to the property. The trees, the impact of the trees with the roots. I did learn something very interesting, and the reason the roots are growing into our property versus the property at one thirty-two is because of the richness of our soil. And the fact that we don't have a driveway and hard pack that is preventing them from going towards the west, which I thought was pretty interesting. That will just continue and give us headaches. So again, please read the note, look at the pictures. And if anybody wants to come and walk the backyard and see the impact, I'm happy to entertain them. Thanks very much, and I appreciate all the work the ZBA is doing. And I hope those trees come down prior to the start of the construction because that makes the most sense. It doesn't make any sense to try and have to do it at a later date or to do it when it's going to be more expensive as well as incur more the possibility of increased damage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
No.
All right. The next item on the agenda for tonight is consideration of draft findings. Maureen, we're going to put the draft decision document on the website, right? So we'll share that.
Yes. Me one second.
Yep, I think it will be easier for us to all work off that one document.
Mr. Judge?
Yep.
I feel a little strange about having the public comment right at the beginning. That's never happened before. So there may be people who want to comment who won't come into this until later. I just feel like we have to at some point go back to public comment, just to see if there's anybody who is logged on.
Well, we did, we did announce it or put it in the agenda that way, and I know it's not the normal process. The reason we put it in the front is because I wanted to make sure that we had the public comment before we made our, did our, made decisions or consideration of, of the findings, the conditions, and the application in general. So I wanted to make sure we had that rather than have it at the end. We could do it, we could do it later on, keep, I guess if we want to.
That was stated where?
On the agenda, I think.
Agenda.
Isn't it in the agenda that was set out? The first item is public comments.
No.
And I said at the meeting, I said at the meeting last, last week that we would do public comments first. I admit it's, it's different than is normally done, but if we have it at the end, then we've gone, we've made our decisions. And the public comment comes after we've made our decisions.
No, it comes before we make our decision.
Well, the final decisions, but we would have to, we're going to vote on findings, we're going to vote on waivers, and we're going to vote on conditions. And then we're going to vote on the, the whole application, the comprehensive permit application in one, one big package at the end.
Okay, it's up to you, but I object.
Well, we'll see if there's, if there are other members of the public that do call in later and raise, raise their hand, we can adjust it. But I suspect we won't see many. We will keep an eye out for it because I don't want to preclude anybody's ability to contribute to the consideration of this. All right.
So, okay, so let me share it. So I'm going to, what you want, we'll start to review the draft finding.
Just go up to the beginning here, top the page where we at background, yep. So this was, again, this was all read by me and by Mr. Langsdale into the record. Last week or two weeks ago. Just, I'm just going to review the most important parts, highlight it, and try to identify any significant changes from that which was approved two weeks ago. The most important part of this is that in accordance, in statement of relevant material facts and findings. In accordance with provisions of seven sixty CMR fifty-six X sec. During the opening, opening public hearing in this matter, the board informed the applicant that the town of Amherst is consistent with local needs. The applicant did not challenge that. And the applicant that empowers the board to deny the project or the alternative to approve the project with conditions. And no appeal from the board's decision by the applicant lies within the Housing Appeals Committee. If condition, the proposed project's benefits outweighs negative effects and will be consistent with the town's master plan and housing plan goals. Notwithstanding the town's status, after careful consideration of the record before it, the board members' knowledge and familiarity with the locus and the surrounding neighborhoods. And the benefits offered by the proposed project. The board has determined that the benefits of the proposed project outweigh any measurable impact and improve and approves the same provided the applicant or its successors or assigns complies with each of the conditions imposed herein. In reaching the conclusion to approve the proposed project with the conditions set forth below, the board makes the following findings of fact. The ZBA finds that there is a need for housing of this type. This proposal is in harmony with the goals of the master plan to increase density in an already developed area. There are several criteria for the needs for this housing or identified from the housing and needs assessment. The housing production plan and the comprehensive market study. Amherst vacancy rate is below two percent. Approximately four thousand or fifty-six percent of Amherst households are paying too much for their housing. The housing production plan determined there is an estimated deficit of twenty-four hundred and seventy-five rental units for those earning below fifty percent. According to the Amherst Housing Authority, over thirteen hundred and fifty-eight applicants are on a wait list for one-bedroom units. According to the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. The proposed project addresses the housing needs of the extremely low and moderate income housing. The management plan assures the tenants will have voluntary access to a variety of social and health services they may need, either onsite or through referrals. US, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development has found that fifty-five percent of the households, forty-nine hundred out of eighty-nine hundred in Amherst are low income. With twenty-six percent of Amherst households extremely low income, fourteen percent very low income, fifteen percent low income. Due to the very low vacancy rate in single occupancy units in Amherst, particularly for lower rent units. And the ongoing pressure on the local housing market by many students in the area seeking off-campus housing. The board concludes that there is a well-documented and continuing local and regional need for additional low and moderate income housing that exists in the town of Amherst. In addition, as conditioned below, the board makes the following additional findings of fact. The proposed project will protect in advance the health and safety of the residents of the proposed housing site. By providing safe pedestrian access. Rental units will be accessible to the mobility impaired. The project does not create an undue burden on the public schools. And there's adequate fire protection and other public safety measures. The proposed project will not threaten the natural environment. The applicant will provide energy efficiency and low carbon footprints. Develop is, development is located in a pedestrian-friendly location. The design and construction of the stormwater sewer will comply with stormwater best management practices. The proposed project promotes acceptable site building and design in relation to the surroundings and municipal regional planning and or preserving open space uses. The project meets several objectives and strategies of the town's master plan. But preserving and expanding the number of affordable units. Creating incentives to make it financially attractive for developers to build affordable housing. Partner with the Amherst Housing Authority and local community development corporations, nonprofit agencies, and other groups expanding affordable housing in Amherst. Improving housing and services for people in the area who are homeless and increasing the amount of housing available to people of very low income. Adjacent properties will be protected from the, from the project specifically, from the intrusion of various types of nuisances. Through screening. Minimal traffic impact. The provision of a residential services coordinator and part-time onsite property management and a twenty-four-seven emergency call number. Stormwater runoff. Management on the site. Exterior lighting will be designed and installed dark, downlit and dark sky compliant. And tracks and trash and recycling will be stored within a screened dumpster area. Those are the findings. So I would think this would be the time for any discussion, any amendment to the findings, and then if we, if we agree to vote on adoption of the findings. Is there any discussion on the findings?
I'm Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Maxfield, I didn't see your sign, your hand.
Oh, um, hi. Hey, how are you? I, for the, the part about, um, making sure the findings are that this isn't a nuisance to adjacent properties. I know we had the, the one public comment about potentially making the smoke free. Do we, as a board, believe that if we were to make it smoke-free and that would then cause people to go out onto Route nine and smoke on the sidewalk, would we say that would be consistent with, with not making this project a nuisance?
Well, I think the discussion about smoke-free or not is probably more appropriate in the conditions section.
Okay.
Rather than in the findings, but I think the findings, either way. There was a findings that there are lots of measures being made to reduce the nuisance to the, to neighbors and the immediate neighborhood. One of those is smoking, but it's also screening and that there are other kinds of things and, and, and not having obvious mechanical devices and not having blasting during Saturdays and giving notice and all the other kinds of things that are done in conditions. And so that one specifically, I would, I would prefer to deal with during conditions, and we will come to that later on.
No, I, I agree, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions about findings? These are important because this really is, is the, the foundation for our, our next two actions which are dealing with waivers and dealing with conditions and then approval or disapproval of the, of the project application. So unless there are any other questions or other discussions. I would move that the draft findings contained in the draft decision document be adopted by the board. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion. The question occurs on the motion to approve the draft findings. This is a roll call vote requiring a majority or three votes to prevail. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
The vote is five ayes, zero nays, and the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of waiver requests. And I think Maureen, probably the best thing to do there would be to bring up the waiver chart that we have.
Give me one second.
Sure. While you find it, I'll just remind board members and the public that we read through each of the waivers. There were some discussion about some of these waivers, which we have, that those changes and modifications have been incorporated in this latest document that you, that you were given by Maureen. But there are not very many changes from that which was read into the record fully last week or two weeks ago. There we go. All right, so I'm going to quickly go through this, and I don't think we need to break these up into sections because I think they're for the most part pretty non-controversial, but I, we will have time at the end of just describing these for discussion amendment and approval or, or disapproval. So the first one is educational uses. There's a minor, there's a minor mapping discrepancy. Secondly, a number of units in the building, we're waiving the, the the limit to allow twenty-eight units. A special permit is required in the, we're waiving the requirement for a special permit because we're granting a comprehensive permit. Five point zero zero general accessory units. Again, we're waiving the requirement for a special permit because we have a comprehensive permit. There is a requirement, a limitation on the maximum percentage of units of one type. We're going to grant a waiver to this because the purpose of the of it right, of this is to allow a building made up solely of efficiency units. It's three point three two three. Allows a apartment to be built in a specific location, heavily traveled street, next to educational district in an area of mix of single-family, multifamily homes. We're waiving the requirement for design review requirements. We're, we're allowing the quantities of cut and fill as shown on the plans to be done without a special permit because we're granting a comprehensive permit. Additional lot area, we're granting a waiver from the additional lot area per family because it would not be feasible if we did not waive that. Articles six, table three, maximum lot coverage, we're waiving waiver, allowing a higher lot coverage for the proposed development. We're granting, we would grant waivers for the side yard from certain side yard requirements. The same thing, we're granting waivers from your rear yard requirements. We're also granting a waiver to up to eight feet for the fence, a waiver for the fence setback, a waiver for the number of parking spaces. To allow sixteen as opposed to two per unit. We're allowing up to fifty, we're granting a waiver to allow fifty percent of post parking spaces to be compact spaces. We're allowing, granting a waiver to allow the parking area to be landscaped as shown in the plan, which includes papers and other kind of, as well as which includes papers and other kind of, as well as. By two minutes covered parking areas. We're granting a waiver on driveway length with the approval of the fire vehicle of the fire department. We're granting a waiver for separately engineered plans for the driveway. We're granting two waivers for sign requirements for the temporary signs. We're granting a waiver to allow the the permitting permitting body can grant a waiver on the traffic impact report. We've deemed this the the report that we've received sufficient. We're granting a waiver on a separate site plan review. Article. Thirteen, granting a waiver on demolition delay inconsistent with the historical commission's recommendation. We're granting a waiver on two waivers on inclusionary zoning. This is what requires low income. The provision of low-income housing in this entire project is low-income housing and complies with the one section of the inclusionary zoning requirement. We're also requiring. Providing a waiver for landscape guidelines, including requiring a separate tree warden approval. He's looked at the property, does not really needs to to, he doesn't have much to say about it. And that's not a lot on town land. And also sewer and water connections are granting a waiver for separate departmental approval because it's part of the comprehensive permit again. And lastly, we're allowing waivers to requirements in local bylaws and regulations related to the dimensional and use requirements to the extent necessary to build the project as presented on plans and any subsequent final plans that may be subject to permitting authority approval. Are there any questions regarding the waivers? If there are no questions, no further questions regarding waivers and no further discussion.
Mr. Judge, Mr. Chair. Ms. Omira has a comment.
I didn't see. It's so hard with this smaller screen to pick up the raised hands. I'm sorry, Ms. Omira.
No, I just raised it. So if we don't agree with some of the waivers, how do we propose that?
We could, you could propose to delete that waiver would be one way or propose to amend that waiver, either one. Ms. Omira.
So.
Concerned about.
Uh, the eight-foot fence?
Mm-hmm. So that's. The six-point-two-four.
Uh, correct.
All right. What's, what question do you want to place before the board to amend that or to? Delete it?
Um, well, I'm challenging the. The equival- equivalency, or however I want to say, with fence height to demolition of the trees. It seems like they're one in hand and I oppose. And I object to the demolition of the trees. And I don't think the eight-foot fence is an appropriate replacement.
Okay. So um, we will have a chance to vote on the eight-foot trees, but if we already grant a waiver for the fence, it wouldn't mean much with those. These are kind of inextricably linked together. Uh, I can, I would suspect your argument, right?
Correct.
This seems a case that we should deal with that, we should deal with that issue and see where the board is on. On allowing an eight-foot fence and have that discussion. So I would suggest the best way to deal with your to pose your question to the board is to move to delete the waiver for six-point-two-four. And then we can have a discussion about it and we can vote on that motion to delete that waiver. Does that make sense for you?
It does.
Okay, so then I would say that Ms. Omira moves to delete such a waiver for section six-point-two-four. Does she have a second? Well, I'll give you a, I'll give you a second in order so you can make your case, but I don't want that to be indicative of how I feel about the the vote, Ms. Omira. So I want to give you a chance to make your case to the board on that article, which is really about the trees and the fence.
I think we've gone over this several weeks already. Yeah, I object to the trees coming down. I don't know why it's coming up now for the ZBA to decide on this. Why wasn't this done twenty years ago for the abutters? I don't get why this project has to absorb the core, the cost of demolishing all those trees. Environmentally, I don't think it's a good idea. Aesthetically, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't, I know I don't have a lot of backing for this issue, but I will still maintain my point of view. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Maxfield.
I mean, I I suppose I'll just, you know, make the case here in in favor of removing the trees here. The the butter wants them gone. The the applicant is applying to have them gone. They want this eight-foot. Eight-foot fence put there in its place. Why is it coming to the ZBA? You know, I don't have an answer to that question, but but it is and and both parties here want them removed. So my point of view here is nobody but us seems to be the ones who would be objecting here. So I'm in favor of removing those trees as both parties want them gone.
Ms. Omira.
Thank you. I just feel like we're being bullied right now by the abutters. That's my point of view. This could have come up twenty years ago when they were had those trees growing there. Why is it on the burden of the developer to get those trees down? I don't agree with that cost. And I don't agree with the environmental impact.
Any further comments? Ms. Parks.
Um, I I will say that I also had a concern about the trees and, you know, for me personally, I would like to see the trees stay, but I am also convinced that for the abutters that this is important and for Valley CDC, they're willing to do that. And so because of those things, I think that I I am okay with those trees being taken down and the eight-foot fence, but I I am sorry to see those trees go.
I have much the same concerns. I don't like to see the trees go either, but I think that you they, if they come down in the future, it's going to be either be more expensive for Valley. I we didn't, I don't think we got a. A naturalist to take a look at them and arborist to take a look at them over the last two weeks to tell us how healthy they are, but at some point those trees come down. And in a seven-million-dollar project, I think the tree tree removal is a small part. But it is is some. Cost, but it's a small cost. And I think if we have the the butter who's willing to. Accept the project with that as one of the conditions, I think it's a worthwhile offering to the town. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Baker.
Um, to Ms. Omira's point, I think the reason they didn't come down twenty years ago is it wasn't understood that they were on the property line. I think they were planted by the Keedys, who were the previous owners of one thirty-two North Hampton Road, very near the property line, and then they grew. And so when we had our survey done about a year and a half, two years ago, I think the abutters were taken aback, surprised that they had a share in these trees at all. I think they assumed they didn't have any control over them. And so. I think it evolved that they grew on to actually the property line. And so it becomes, they become what's referred to as line trees, which do require, you know, approval of both parties for them to be taken down.
Any other comments from members of the board? Yeah, Langsdale.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Baker, I just because I don't remember. The cost of bringing the trees down, is that to be shared between you and the abutters?
No, that's not our intention. Our intention is that it would be part of the project cost along with the fencing and the screening plantings. You know, as part of an accommodation to someone who's gonna live next to a changed circumstance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I think most members have expressed. Their opinion. Unless there's any further discussion. The vote occurs on the motion by Ms. Omira to delete. Six-point-two-four, the waiver of six-point-two-four. This is a roll call vote requiring three votes to delete the requirement. I vote nay, Mr. Langsdale.
Aye.
Say it again, nay or a?
A. 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 Why?
N A, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, it looks like Valley C D, I don't know if it's Laura or someone else from Valley's CDC, but someone just raised their hand.
Well, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, sorry.
We're gonna keep going, that's okay. So I vote nay, Mr. Langsdale votes nay, Ms. Omira.
Aye.
She votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Nay.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
The vote is one aye and four nays. The waiver request, the motion to delete the waiver request is not approved. Are there any other? Amendments or? Conditions amendments or discussion about the waivers? Hearing none, the vote occurs on, I make a motion that we approve the waivers as. In the draft decision document that we have before us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the waiver requests? If not. This is a roll call, the question occurs on the motion to approve the draft waiver requests. This is a roll call vote requiring a majority or three votes to prevail. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale.
Aye.
Ms. Omira.
Nay.
Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
The vote is four ayes and one nay, and the motion to approve the waiver request passes. The next item on the agenda is consideration of draft conditions. Now, we've got a lot of, again, like, like the waiver requests and the findings. We and with the really much appreciated help of the velvet tones of Mr. Langsdale and the pear-shaped tones of Mr. Langsdale. Last meeting, we went through each of these. We read them each into the to the record, and so I'm not going to do that again. And what I propose to do is summarize them in groups. So the first group would be from. From. Item number one through item number eleven, which are just general. General provisions. And then we can discuss, amend, and move on for each for each of the conditions. So the first eleven conditions. The total number of dwelling units is limited to twenty-eight. We've been through all that, we, this is the general restrictions on the number of units and who shall be who should be eligible from income, from an income standpoint for each of the units. There's a regulatory agreement required that ensures the preservation of the above noted affordability requirements. The town is going to be made party to that regulatory agreement. That answers some of the questions we had about what happens if there should be financial problems with the sponsor or the applicant. There are some conditions regarding communication, you know, standard conditions regarding communications with the town when certain actions take place. There is a condition, number five, that deals with certification and included in that condition is response to some of the questions raised by board members that the applicant agrees to is required to work with tenants whose income has increased. That's contained in, has increased, that's contained in. Condition number five. There are. There's protection for the town that allows us to the continue to have the authority to enforce the provisions of the comprehensive permit. There's a seventy percent local preference for units in the initial lease-up contained in condition nine. Condition ten and eleven require a development of a marketing plan and a final approval from the subsidizing agency. And she'll be given to the building commissioner for final approval. That's the first eleven conditions. Is there any discussion, questions, or amendments to the first eleven conditions? I understand this, Ms. Baker, you have some questions about some of these conditions that have not been raised with the staff before. Or or their conditions or questions that you raised but were not included in the draft document, is that it?
It is. So we had, we had submitted comments, but just the sequencing was a little out of order. So I don't think these are major items, but on item number nine, which is the business about the local preference, we had asked for a sentence to be added saying that the applicant shall only be responsible for implementing local preference to the extent it is approved by the subsidizing agency, following requests made by the town. Basically, we can't. Unilaterally implement it without approval of the subsidizing agency.
And what, why is that, why is your language needed? When in within number nine, it says the local preference shall comply with procedures approved by the subsidizing agency. I mean, it says there, but you can't, you, we, if they don't approve it, if they don't allow it, then you can't. Do it, and we acknowledge that.
To me, that says that we'll follow their protocols as we implement the local preference.
But if they don't approve the local preference.
Right, we can't follow their procedures.
Then the local preference, you wouldn't be complying if you had a local preference. So you have to, you comply with local preference. By not offering it. I mean, that's the, it's, I mean, it's clear here to me, it's clear here to me that if you, if. The, who is it, DHCD?
Yes.
If DHCD rejects the local preference that the town and you have applied for, that you're not going to be required to have a local preference.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Comments or amendments to conditions one through eleven? We'll move to B then, B would be through. Oh, through condition twenty-one. Most of these are really procedural regarding town and water sewer hookups. Who is responsible for obtaining relevant approvals? The the one that there's a comment on regards the fees. There was some concern that we are locking in fees that may may. Reduce the flexibility of the town to increase fees or charge more in the end. I think staff has talked to, is it DPW about the likelihood of fee increases during the time of construction and we found it's unlikely or that there was no plans to increase fees, and so we're not locking ourselves out of potential fee increases. Is that right, Maureen?
Correct, so I I spoke to the DPW superintendent Guilford Moore, Maureen, last Friday about the the language of condition fifteen regarding the fees. And he stated that he is not anticipating increasing fees in in the next two to five years. So he said he's comfortable with the condition as as written.
There's a requirement for CAD plans for easements, lines. And pins and utilities. Requirement that before building permit, the applicant should submit an operation maintenance plan for the stormwater management. All utilities shall be underground, just one question about that. And the that the project completed, shall be completed and dwelling units made available within 24 months. I know that's a time that we anticipated last week and I wonder if the applicant is still comfortable with that 24 month timeframe. Is that too short or is that? Ms. Baker?
Sure, so we had actually proposed just a little more specific language. Completion, construction shall be completed within actually 20 months from the issuance of the notice to proceed to the general contractor until the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued. Just because construction, the construction period was, didn't seem well defined.
Mr. Mora or Mr. Waskevich? Is that acceptable to you or is, is what's contained in this standard operating procedure and you'd rather have as, have it remain as drafted?
This is Rob Mora, I don't have any concerns about the proposed language as long as the, the board's intent is to have a project come to its substantial completion once it started and that language seems to do that if the board found that acceptable.
So Ms. Baker, can you, do you have specific language that you want to offer to us tonight?
I do.
Okay, and what would it, how would it read?
Construction shall be completed within 20 months from issuance of the notice to proceed to the general contractor until the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued.
You have that, Maureen?
Correct, yes, and Laura did provide that. Provide her comments in a email that I, I actually did send over just two days ago. So anyways, I do have that, that language.
Okay. That's, so I propose, oh, Mr. Langsdale, go ahead.
I, I, I just wanna ask, I, I know you're concerned about time, but you're really skipping through this. I have no idea which one of these you were just talking about in terms of that language. I'm going back and forth with these pages and I can't find it, so.
I, I should have told you, it's, it's number 21.
Okay.
That we were just talking about, where we last week talked about a timeframe in which to complete this. And we
I'm, I'm just asking, I'm asking because the anyone who, from the public may not have this or, or may not have read this. So a, as you tend to skip through these things, if you could just let us know where you are as you're skipping through. So we have, what's being, what's being talked about?
I can give you some, I'll give you numbers of conditions, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
So for number 21, I move that we accept the, that we amend number 21 as per the language offered by that Maureen has from the applicant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about that amendment? Ms. Parks?
Can I just hear it one more time?
Yes, thank you.
I'll say it. Construction completion, so sorry, construction shall be completed within 24, sorry. Oh, construction shall be completed within 20 months from issuance of the notice to proceed to the general contractor until the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued.
Would it be helped, Maureen, can you type that up on that page?
You know what I would
In blue or something?
If you bear with me for one second, I am just going to open Laura's 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 document of suggested comments. So bear with me for one moment. It's condition, hold on a second.
Mr. Judge?
Yes, Mr. Langsdale?
I, I think even if she opens that and we look at what Ms. Baker said, we then need to know exactly how this is going to read before we can say yes or no to it.
Yep, but I think we see it will know where it can go in the, in the condition.
So I'm just gonna highlight. So, so Laura, can you repeat it?
Yep. Construction shall be completed within 20 months from issuance of the notice to proceed to the general contractor until the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued.
So the general contractor gets a notice that he may proceed. You have 20 months to complete, you have 20 months to complete the, the construction. And then you go for a, 20 months, not in complete the construction, but to get a temporary certificate of occupancy. Is that correct?
Yep. So just, sometimes there's a gap between when the building permit issues and when we actually start construction. Could be depending on a, a legal matter, closing time of year. So the real clock starts ticking in terms of physical construction when we issue a notice to proceed. And the temporary certificate of occupancy means people can move in. So the building is that ready that people are allowed to move into it.
And notice to, there's no construction activity that, tell me if I'm wrong. This is a question, should be said as a question. Is there any ability for any construction activity to take place prior to a note, notice to proceed the general contractor?
Not, not contractually between the owner and the contractor. They can only start after we give them a notice to proceed.
Okay.
Does that?
Mr. Langsdale?
Does that include the removal of the trees?
It includes any work on the site.
Okay.
So you've got 20 months to do the work.
Okay, let's go back. Does that also include the demolition of the house that's there?
Yep.
Okay, well, this says construction shall be completed. Should, should there be anything about the demolition of the house and the trees?
You know, I, I I, I don't think you need the demolition because they can't do the construction without the demolition. So it's almost, you can't have, you can't have construction without the demolishment. The trees you could do without, I guess. But you can't do anything, as this is understood, you can't do anything that's on the plan. You can't, you can't touch anything until
You get a notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed. Let me just ask Mr. Mora if that's correct. Is there some de minimis work that can be done or is there, like, nothing can happen until you get a, an issuance of the notice to proceed?
Well, I mean, that's really, you know, a, a, a contract question between the owner and the contractor and what their scope of services includes. Generally, that's the case. So a, a general contractor that has the full scope of work from demolition to site work, tree removal through construction to certificate of occupancy, wouldn't be doing anything until they have the notice to proceed.
So if we wanna lock this down, we would, we could say something to the effect that construction, neither construction nor landscape, landscape preparation shall take, shall how do you do that, add that into that language?
Mr. Judge?
I expect that Mrs. Hardy's got a suggestion for me.
If, I, I do. You might insert a parenthetical after the word construction to say including any site work. So it would be construction parenthesis, open parenthesis, including any site work, closed parenthesis, close, closed parenthesis. And I think that that would take care of Mr. Langsdale's concern.
Okay. Ms. Parks?
Just because I don't understand, so where does the notice to proceed come from? Who issues that?
So, this is, to me, this is a, this is such, this is a very minor issue. I'm happy to go back to the town's original language. We didn't know how much time you were gonna fill in where those Xs were. So we made our own suggestion. If you wanna leave it the way that you had it and have the 24 months, I think it's probably fine also.
Okay, but who does, who, who issues the notice to proceed? That comes from you to the general contractor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, I guess the reason I was bringing it up is because in 21, it says within 24 months from the date that this decision becomes final. And I guess I feel like that's coming from us, whereas the issuance of notice to proceed it could, could that happen a year, a year from now? In other, in other words, 24 months from the decision to me is set in time. Whereas this one, I, it's, what's missing for me is in relation to the decision. You know what I mean?
Yeah, you're, and what I think they're saying is that the relevant limitation on, the relevant time when they can work is not dependent on when the decision is made, but it has to start at some later point when the weather is right or other, other factors could impinge upon that. And they wanna have 20 months in which to, to do site work and construction from some date. And I guess the only thing we could do is say that you, you know, some kind of overarching, you know, 24, 26 months. Everything has from the date of, of approval or some other trigger to try to keep them in. So that doesn't go on for three years or something is, is I think your concern is that you wanna have it for a period of time and not go on forever, right, Ms. Parks?
That's, I, that's my, the only concern is that when I, you know, when I'm reading the language, it's feeling like the, there's more, more time can pass, so yeah, I
But I also think they're driven by economics to try to get it done as quickly as possible too. So that's the market forces that I think would drive that.
Okay.
All right. Let's, one last comment on this and then we should move on. Ms. Baker?
Ms. Parks was talking about two different things. So there's a period of time between the issuance of the zoning permit and when construction can start. And typically, that's a three year window. And then there's a different, this is specifying how long are we making noise and doing construction on the site? And I'm totally happy to yield back to the way that was before. The 24 months is sufficient. Again, we, we, we were asked how much time we, we thought we needed and so we provided this. But 24 months from building permit to completion, substantial completion is also fine language. But it doesn't mean we're gonna start building within 20 or 24 months. That's an entirely different question.
Okay, so the applicant is happy with, with condition 21 as stated in the draft condition. If, unless members of the board want to deal with that question and wanna amend that, I'm willing to withdraw my amendment, my, my motion to amend number 21. I don't think, I think that protects this, I think what's there protects the town now. Town officials are happy with it, they drafted this. What, now what?
I, I'm sorry. This is something really different than it used to say. So number 21 says the project approved here and shall be completed and all dwelling units made available for occupancy within 24 months from the date this decision becomes final. That would never happen. So typically zone, I've seen zoning decisions that have a three year window where you have to begin construction within three years. And then the previous draft of this talked about how long of a construction period we would have. And somewhere along the way, it's changed into something that's quite different.
Okay, so we have before us the question of the, the language proposed. But the amendment that I have on the table, which is the language that you saw written, put on the conditions by Maureen. The language, oops, it's gone.
Can you see my screen now?
Yep, can see your screen, but I see
So this was
Different plan. So Maureen, yeah, this is a different condition and different numbered.
So th, this was how this condition that we're talking about, about construction was written as of Friday. I, I believe attorney Witten revised the, this condition as you saw momentarily. So this is what the board had. This was, with the, the board was contemplating at the last meeting. And, and at that, and then at that time, we put in XX as we were kinda just wondering what, well, how many months would make sense? So would the board be agreeable to the condition as written here?
As it yet, see it before us and then would have to be some time of, type of, length of time that this could reasonably be done, be done in. And that would have to be, it sounds like 36 months. Is that right?
No, I mean, we typically have, a zoning permit usually lasts for two or three years. You have two or three years to start the work. Felicity, can you weigh in on this?
Yeah, that, yes, that
But, just a, just a second. Ms. Hardy? Mr. Mora or, or Mr. Waskevich? You have to deal with this all the time.
Dave, can you?
Tell us what your, what your preferences for doing this.
Can you hear me? Stay with Kevin.
Now we can.
Yeah, so oftentimes there's a starting point. It could be tied to the building permit issuance, for instance. I think you need some starting point because just 24 months from, from what? You need some, somewhere to start. There's gonna be a time period, at least for construction, where, you know, once you go through this special permit and it'll be a, a, a time period that it could be appealed and then it becomes law and then it gets filed with the registry. So then the contractor will come in and he'll file his building permit. We'll need some time to review it unless we can get some preview of it. But, you know, we have 30 days to do that. So I think it makes sense to start from the time that the building permit is issued. He'll have, or they will have 24 months until the completion from that timeframe. But the other thing that's also been mentioned is oftentimes in the past boards have wanted a project to start, say, within 24 months or be substantially complete. So there's many different ways to look at this. So that is also something to consider.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to point out that, as you can see, this condition, which reads completion of construction shall be completed within so many months from the issuance of the building permit. That is typically how the board has been writing conditions for other projects opposed to the other, other draft.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Witten? Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good, good evening, members of the board. So the, the comprehensive permit under the relevant regulations is good for three years, but that doesn't speak to the construction period. So paragraph 23 is, as Maureen said, a very traditional and typical paragraph. If the applicant believes that 24 months is not sufficient, then certainly the board could extend that, consider an extension right now and make it 36 months or whatever the board feels comfortable. But the reason to put the closure of the construction period is to force the applicant to expedite construction. So that is the basic rationale for why the board would not want an open ended construction period. And obviously, the applicant doesn't want that either. But you may be dealing with another applicant, you, you know, you just never know. So putting a timeframe on when construction shall be completed is a good practice. The applicant can always come in and ask for a subsequent extension if the market demands it or for any, any legitimate reason. So I, I, I would urge the board to keep paragraph 23 in, choose the period that is acceptable to the board.
Ms. Hardy, response?
Uh, Mr. Judge?
Uh, Mr. Judge, we don't have a problem whatsoever with a construction period that's tied to the issuance of the building permit. The problem is, and so that the language in, in section 23, as shown on the screen by Maureen, now we can put in 20 months or 24 months from the issuance of the building permit. That's fine. I think the point that Ms. Baker was making was that there is a period of time between the issuance of the decision and the time when we will be prepared to start the project because there is a fairly lengthy period that will, um, follow the issuance of the decision while we complete the financing process. So that this whole process is going to take a while. We don't have a problem with a construction period as long as it's tied to the issuance of the building permit, because we won't be in a position to apply for the building permit until we get the financing that we need in order to construct it.
Okay, so you do have, you need X amount of months from the issuance of the building permit. Let's lock down one thing first, and then we can move to, if we need to do anything else. How many months is realistic for the issue, for construction within the issuance of the building permit? Ms. Baker?
I think 24 months is fine.
All right. Put 24 months up there, if you would. Okay, I've been, then, do we need, I don't know if we need to say anything about the time between decision that we make and when the, and when the, uh, building permit is issued, because that is going to be controlled by the applicant. You're going to work as, and then you, you will apply for the building permit. So you'll, I'm assuming that you will try to work as fast as possible to get that building permit as done, so you can get on, get on with it, right? And so your financing doesn't lapse and everything else. You don't want to lose your subsidies. Is there any reason that you would, it, do you need to have that time between the permit and between our decision and the, and the, um, issuance of the building permit? Restricted or narrowed or limited? You'd need nothing. Is there any reason the public would need to have that time restricted or narrowed? I can't think of any reason, except we want to make sure that you do it. Mr. Langsdale, I see that you had a, you did have your hand raised.
Yeah, we had two, two things. Uh, one, uh, 23 as it reads now, Maureen, I think you can just cut the completion of at the beginning. It's redundant. Completion of construction shall be completed. It's just construction shall be completed. But the other thing I think that is important is that if it takes them two or three years because of get, uh, uh, finalizing financing before they get the building permit, I think it's important that this the idea of that nothing can be done on the property until the issuing of the building permit, so that there's not, like, if, if they were to do some work and then it would all fall through, then the, the property has been damaged. Um, I, it seems to me that that should be part of the, uh, equation before the issuance of the building permit. Because if it takes two or three years for this to get the building permit, we don't want anything to happen to the property before then.
Reading through, see if that it's addressed in any other, any other condition or in normal operation of the town. Can anything be done on the property before the issuance of the building permit?
Mr. Waskevitz raising his hand.
Yeah, Mr. Waskevitz. I can't see your hand there very well, David, if you could. There you go, then I can see you.
Yeah, I, uh, attorney Witten had touched on, there's a three-year window, and I don't know if that's something that should have a condition that you have to act, or is that's just because of law, they need to act within three years?
Yeah, that's a regulatory requirement. So the board could put that in as a condition, uh, but it doesn't have to. And generally speaking, once, once an applicant receives financing, we, we have never seen a lapse of, of a permit. Um, so no, I, I, I'm comfortable not including that. Unless the board wanted to choose a shorter timeframe, which it could, because the board is consistent with local needs. But, but again, my sense for this project is it wouldn't be appropriate.
All right. So I guess the one question I did have though, Mr. Waskevitz, can they go in and cut down trees without a building permit? That's, that's really what this comes to, or can they rip up the, the lawn and have all the, and have stormwater and, uh, other kind of drainage issues created in the time before the building permit is issued?
Mr. Chairman, the answer to, the answer is no, the answer is no, the way the, the draft decision is written. So there, there, there are a lot of conditions precedent to site clearing, uh, built into the decision. So I, David, I didn't, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I didn't mean to talk over you. Um, but so that, that is up to the board. The board could, can tighten those if they choose. But the way it's drafted now, uh, no, they couldn't, if the board were to vote tonight, for example, uh, the bo- uh, the applicant could not go in and clear cut the site, uh, subject until they met the conditions that are subject to this comprehensive permit.
Okay. All right. So what I would like to do then is, we seem, unless there's other discussion regarding this, this, um, amendment. I would like to amend my amendment by saying to amend in, on the draft decision, it's number 21. We're looking at number 23 here. Amend number 21 on the draft decision as we see 23 on the white page before us. To the conditions. So if that makes sense, so that condition will then, number 21 will then read completion of construction shall be, uh, construction shall be completed. We'll take out completion of, construction shall be completed within 24 months from the issuing of a building permit.
Did you want to include, uh, this, um, this verbiage here, including site work, or no?
I don't think we need, I, I don't think we need that. We can't do anything on that area. So the motion is to amend number 21 to read take, delete completion of, construction shall be completed within 24 months from the issuance of the building permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Parks, yep.
Um, so what happens if construction, um, doesn't happen within three years?
You lose the comprehensive permit.
Okay. So there's not, could they come, could they ask for an extension if?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they can come back. And we've had in the past, we've had special permits. I don't know about comprehensive permits, but we've had in the past, people who've had trouble with, uh, um, financing or something have come in and asked for an additional time. So that's been done before, but it doesn't happen very often. All right, quick, one last comment. Yes, Mr. Langsdale.
Um, on what I have in front of me, this written stuff, it's, uh, condition 21. On the screen, it's condition 23. How did we get up to two more? What, what's been added that makes this condition 23?
This is what Maureen explained. This is what you see, the red that you were receiving the mail, the one that we had, or you received on your property, and the one that we had on the screen is the draft decision document.
When you have both, uh, you, you have the draft decision, um, it should be the last pack, uh, last, like stapled um, information in your packet that was given to you. So if you go to condition one of this, um, of this draft decision, uh, attorney Witten added this first condition. Uh, the project shall be constructed in strict conformance with the project plans.
Yeah, that's there.
And that wasn't in the, um, other copy that was added.
What I've got is the one that, that's all in red. And it had, it has the number one, project shall be constructed in strict compliance. And still, when we get to where we are now, it's number 21, not 23. So there are two more that have been added somewhere. I don't know where they've been added. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
We're not oper- but we are operating off the red. So what you're asking is what's, what's changed between what was the white document?
No, no, I'm asking, okay, let me do this again. I've got the red document, you see?
Yeah, we all do.
And it says, number one, the project shall be constructed in strict conformance, right? Which means when we get to where we're talking about now, we're at, on this, the red document, it says, sec 21. On screen, it says 23. I'm asking what two conditions were added to make this 23? Instead of 21, which is what it is on this.
The one on, the one on screen is, I guess we need to know what document is on the screen, Maureen.
Are you, what you're seeing in front of you is the draft decision.
So.
But that's what I, but that's what this is. This is the draft decision, correct?
The, the red, the red.
And there's a, there is, uh, i- if you look at your, um, header, what does it say, Keith? Does it say draft comprehensive permit?
Yes.
Then there you go.
And, and there I go, what, what does that mean?
That is the permit. That is the, this, the draft decision.
So.
And that is what is in front of you on the screen.
Somebody, could somebody else explain this to me? I don't know what's going on here.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please, Ms. Parks.
Okay, Maureen, can you copy 23 off of this page, move this page away, go back to the red one and add this and update 21 to have this language that you just put here? Because this is an older document, the one that you have now, right? And we'd.
So, so, so what is in front of you that is the, um, that was provided by attorney Witten, that is dated, revised date, October 25th, 2020, is the most up-to-date document that the board should be looking at and that I'm sharing on the screen.
That's not what's on the screen.
Yeah, the, what's on the screen is, is the draft document dated the 23rd, and I'm just suggesting.
Maybe, maybe I'm not sure, maybe I am showing, maybe this is a Zoom issue. Is this what you see?
This is what, this is what we're working on.
Okay, yes, so, uh, because I was just switching around, um, apologies. I think because we were discussing the completion of construction condition, I was opening documents and Zoom, and so it was a Zoom issue. So
So what?
Alas, we're on the same page in a lot of ways. So what you see again is the comprehensive permit, uh, draft decision, uh, revision date, October 25th. Um, and this is the most up-to-date, uh, document that, that, uh, we should be referring to. And so, um, so apologies if, if the incorrect screen sharing was, uh, indicating a different page, uh, for your viewing purposes. So what you see before you, uh, is, uh, condition 21. I put a suggested strike through, uh, for the language that is shown here, and I have edited it to provide suggested, uh, language. It says, construction shall be completed within 24 months from the issuance of the building permit.
Thank you. Ms. Hardy.
I, I was just going to point out, um, that this section, there's, there's a couple of sort of strange numbering um, things, and I don't know if that addresses Mr. Langsdale's issue. Uh, but I noticed that in section B, um, I think between 12 and 13, yes, this, there's a number five. Did you see that?
Oh, you're right.
Okay, um, uh, so that it is possible that, that the numbering scheme became a little um, uh, messed up with, uh, the, between the drafts. So that's one point. And then the second point, and Mr. Witten can probably address this, but I believe that he might have added a reference to the actual final plans in this section. Again, I can't, I didn't compare this version to the prior version, but as we were discussing it, I, I seem to have recognized something like that. So those may be the, um, some of the, the ways that the numbering system got a little strange.
Okay. So we're at 21, the, the, what's before the board right now is an amendment to conditions, to condition 21 from the revi- revive, the October 25th version. You see it on the, on the board, you see it on the, um, screen before you, it's the following language, construction shall be completed within 24 months. The, is there a second for this amendment to that? Condition?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Just on that condition and that, that amendment. If not, the vote occurs on the amendment. It's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
The motion carries. It is amended. Is there any other discussion or amendments to section B, which is utility management conditions? If not, we'll proceed to the next section, begins with section C, and we'll go from condition 22 to condition uh, 33. Condition 22 is all laws and regulations the town of Amherst apply. Condition 23 deals with, um, lighting fixtures, shall be dark sky compliant. That is also referenced in, we'll get to this later, to another, um, condition, which I think we will want to um, merge the two conditions. The, um, condition 24 is project plan, this, this provides the building commissioner, 24 provides the building commissioner, the ability to determine if changes from the approved plan is something other than minimal and does not meet either the conditions of A, B, C, A, B, or C, which are minor modifications to the plan. And if they are not minimal, if he determines that they're not minimal, they come back to the ZDA. That's condition 24. And you see the other areas, specific authorizations for minor changes, two feet and walkways, site perimeters, it's substantial interior, exterior changes, and it's substantial interior exchange changes requiring energy, uh, to achieve energy efficiency. Condition 25. You've got to comply with, um, unmarked human burials. Condition 26. Prior to the authorization of this, uh, any activity authorized by the decision, you've got, the applicant has to provide the commissioner with the name and address and telephone number of the manager. Number 27. Uh, again, provides requirements for providing information to the building, uh, to the building commissioner before any building permit. So these, in many ways, is the self-enforcing, but we're putting them here in, in the condition. The condition, number 28, the condition logistics plan shall be settled to the following conditions. These are some time restrictions on, uh, construction activity. I'm assuming that we'll discuss that further. That includes, as re- as it currently reads, restrictions from seven to, uh, it's, and exterior construction can only happen between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. No idling, no, um, noise. You have to have noise attenuation for motors and pneumatic equipment. And in, uh, you've got to inform the building commissioner if it's going to be blasting. Uh, 29 imposes, um, construction activity. Has to, it requires a meeting with the building commissioner. 30. Requires the engineer of record. To visit the construction site as necessary. 31. No exterior construction activity, including fueling of vehicles on project site before seven or after six, Monday through Saturday. There should be no construction on the project. On certain days, the holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, et cetera. And the applicant agrees to the hours of operation shall be enforceable by the Amherst Police. The project's got to be fenced. That's 32, 33 is all item effort should be made to minimize noise on, on Sundays, on Saturdays, excuse me. And we'll stop there and discuss, I think there's a couple of issues within that group of conditions. So. Discussion regarding. Conditions 22 through. 33. Okay. There's no discussion? All right. Moving on to the next set of conditions. These also involve, generally involve the. Construction site. Site improvements will go from. Condition 34. To conviction 46. 34 requires measures to reduce dust, noise, debris, and construction materials on the site. Or to contain them. Number 35 deals with the same thing, washing tires, protecting trees. Bringing every disturbed area back up to finished grade, stabilize. Banks, reduce erosion. 36. Every night, they've got to. Make sure that erosion protection measures are in place. 37. Stormwater disposal should be protected and prevent soil compaction by heavy equipment. 38. Deals with drainage structures being protected from soil and debris flow into them during construction. 39 limits stumps and other constructions debris from being deposited on the site. This is number 40, also deals with exterior lighting. As does 23. And I think, well, it's, it's not a problem to have two of them. You know, there may be a way to combine 40 with 23 and just reduce the number of conditions, but I don't want to get into a numbering thing, so we're just, I'm not going to suggest that right now. 41, the project shall survive snow storage on the, as shown on project plans. 42. Provided amenities, as shown on project plans, which are included the raised gardens, patios, outdoor tables, chairs, smoking area. Equipped with a bench and smoking urn covered bike storage and lawn areas. Number 43, town engineer shall inspect. Number 44, own property. Any town-owned property that may be impacted by this. Should be a surety bond to cover that potential damage. Number 45. Within 60 days following the construction. The applicant has to show an as-built plan, again, pretty standard stuff, you got to show the plan as was actually built. With specifics on the size of the, the detail. And 46. Says that the final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued for any building or dwelling unit until. Top coat of paving landscaping is done and as-built plans have been submitted. So is there any discussions, questions, or amendments? To conditions 34. Through 46. And I don't want to rush people, but if there are none. We'll give it a minute. Mr. Langsdale?
I think we need to talk again about the, the smoking area. We've had several comments from the public. Wanting first of all, to be a smoke-free area. And then there's one specific one regarding the proposed site. And with, I think the addition of the photographs, especially the one of the, when the football game is on, those kind of weekends. Where there are tents right up against the fence. Which puts the smoking area five feet from. Five to maybe eight feet from those tents. It's, it's, that's, that's the reason I proposed the area on the northeast corner. So that the smoking area would be at least 15 to 20 feet back from the road, over 100 feet from the. Next door butter. And not anywhere near the. Proposed building. And it can be completely screened. It doesn't have to be a pergola, or it can be a bench and. Some, you know, surrounded by trees and stuff. I just. I, I still think that, that where. That if it is to be. Not a smoke-free area. That the positioning of the smoking area now is. Better for those who are in the building. But not better for. The Amherst College activities. With it so close to the property line in that fence. I would, this, this is something I, this is one of the reasons why I talked about the public. Comments. This is something I would like to hear from the public about, if there's anyone who wants to talk about it. Because I, I, I think this is a. Like Joan with the trees. This, the, the, the location of this smoking area, it's for me is. Not good.
Well, we did have, we did have a couple of public comments regarding, specifically regarding the smoking area. And we did have a public comment tonight from one person. On the, on the public comment period, and we've had a couple of comments regarding that from the public. So Mr. Langsdale, I think what you need to do is to, if that. If you desire to move that. Then you would have to have a condition that. Said that the. The smoking. Pavilion shall be located in, then we will refer back to the. Earlier plan. I, you know, we had a name for that plan, we'd have to include that in the amendment, which we could do, you know, instruct the staff to include that. But that earlier. Meeting two weeks ago, or I guess two meetings ago, we identified an alternate place, I think it was alternate A for the smoking pavilion. So. Which, you, you probably need an amendment to the conditions to do that. You'd want to add a new condition saying that the smoking pavilion shall be in position X. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so that would be that, the, the place that we. Scott, that we, was plotted on an earlier draft.
On the, on the, the last draft. Showing. Alternate spaces for the smoking area.
And I think.
I don't have that, and so I can't give you the, the letter that it was. But it was.
But I think, I think somebody does have it.
Okay.
Ms. Baker?
G.
All right. So G, we can find, so I will stipulate that we can find that. Space, and we can find that specific reference to the, the sheet and space G. So you're, you have an amendment that would add a requirement that the smoking area be located in space G as defined on. Later to be named page and plan, correct?
Yes, however, first, I would like to go back. Even before that, because there was a point in time where. The applicants said that they were willing to make it a smoke-free area. Completely.
So which one do you want to deal with first?
The smoke-free.
Okay, so then you have, do you have a motion regarding that?
I make a motion that. The. Entire site of the project be smoke-free.
Is there a second? Hearing no second. There's no. Motion before the board.
All right, then I make a motion that the site for the smoking area be changed. From its present location to that of location G. On the last revised plans that we saw regarding the smoking areas.
Is there a second for Mr. Langsdale's motion? The motion will fail without a second, will fail to be before the body without a second. The motion fails to be presented to the body for lack of a second. Are there other? Proposed amendments or changes to? Conditions. 34 through. 46. Ms. Pollock?
Did you want to? Clean up 33 versus 40 or combine them?
23 and 40?
Yeah, 20, 23.
I want to make sure that. Let's, I, I was going to ask Mr. Langsdale as well if he, if he has a. Somebody who's definitely interested in that, if he has a position on that, but I think we should combine the two, just make one.
Do you want to read it aloud? So.
All, I'll read aloud, all exterior lighting, including pole lights, attached building lighting and pedestrian lighting, shall be dark sky compliant. And shall be downcast, shielded, and shall not sign directly onto adjacent properties or streets. All exterior lighting shall be in accordance with the photometric lighting plan, including, included with the project plans. And 23. Adds lighting fixtures shall be selected according to the dark sky compliance recommendation of the board's rules and regulations. So I would propose that we add 23. To the end of. What is it, 40? 40. And just clean it up and have all the, the lighting in one place.
Yeah, I'm going to make a note to delete this, because I think this, if I delete anything, it messes up the numbers.
Yeah, just, just make a note that we'll. Well, the board has to vote on it before we do that, yeah.
Maybe delete?
So I move, we add 23 to the, to the back of 40. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Westgenitz?
I think it's number 39, if you want to go back to the number, Maureen.
So as shown, it's a condition 40.
Showing the red.
I'm looking at green.
Is everyone, is everyone seeing one?
Yep. All right, any other discussion? No further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion. The vote will be a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira? Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Are there any other? Questions, discussions, or amendments to? Consider, to conditions 34 through 46. Ms. Baker, do you have a question?
I have a proposed amendment on number 42 for the board to consider. Where it says raised gardens, if we could say garden areas. The presumption that we would invest in raised gardens is based on having tenants who want to garden. And we don't know yet if we will. And so our plan is showing spaces where people could garden. But we're not going to put in a lot of raised beds if we don't have tenants who are interested in gardening.
Can't imagine that that's going to be controversial. I move, we add the word areas. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We have to have a roll call vote on this. If there's no further discussion, I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion, motion carries five to nothing. All right, we've moved through 34 to 46. Going once, going twice. Going three times, we'll move on to the next set of conditions. Landscaping, 47 deals with, requires it be done in accordance with the plan. 48, maintaining landscaping is the plan. And requires replacement. 49 requires. Stand practicable, use natural herbicides and non-toxic chemicals. Number 50, all matures trees found within the shut site, except for trees designated in the landscaping. Plan noted for removal shall remain and be maintained as to provide a visual screening from adjacent properties. Any existing mature, mature tree to remain on the locus that dies following the issuance of this decision will be replaced as follows. And then requires that a tree be replaced of a similar height. And if two is decided, it's replaced with a similar species. So. Are there any amendments, is there any discussion, or are there any amendments to condition 47 through 50? Dealing with landscaping? All right, we'll move on to, to E, consider. Items 40, 51 through 55. Requires 16 parking places with two of those parking places. Designed as designated as accessible. Shall be, and it shall be accessible as to the ADA and the Architectural Access Board. 52 is. Requires a compact, 53 requires delivery off, shall not be off-site. I mean, delivery shall not be, shall be conducted off-street and onsite. You can't block traffic on, on the street. 55, exterior outlet, the bike facility, and 54 exterior outlet of the bike. Charging station, and no idling of any vehicles. Is there any discussion? On 51 through 55? First, let me get the board before we go to the applicant, Ms. Hardy, thank you. I do have one. One suggestion that we add the words. And the manage, and the parking management plan as submitted to the end of 51, so it would read. The project shall include. As provided, blah, 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 as provided in the project plans and the management plan and the parking management plan as submitted. Because that, as we got the parking management plan from the applicant, it contains more detail than the original management plan. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Or any, is there any discussion? Is this something that you want to talk about, Ms. Hardy? The subject matter, no, okay.
No, I have something else.
Okay. If there's no further discussion. We'll have a vote on that amendment. It's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Ms. Park?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Ms. Hardy? Ms. Hardy, you had.
Mr. Judge, I noticed a missing word in item fifty-four. I think you want to say the applicant shall provide at least one exterior electrical outlet within the bike shed. I think that the word shed has been inadvertently left out.
And I think that is a technical and conforming change that does not need a roll call vote. All right, thank you for that.
No problem.
Maureen, you can make that change, you're authorized to make that change. Any other questions regarding fifty-one through fifty-five? All right, we move to section F, management will deal with conditions fifty-six through sixty-eight. First one deals with requiring that they live up to the management plan. The second identifies the areas that the management plan deals with, which includes management, operations, maintenance, marketing, trash recycling, odor mitigation, litter control, off-street parking, site lighting signage, landscape, snow removal, stormwater management, preventative maintenance, capital need security, off-street loading and noise mitigation, complaint response procedure, and overall sustainability and healthy operation of the project. Fifty-eight says that the applicant shall be responsible for operation for aspects of the operation. The town accepts no responsibility for provision of any of those so mentioned services. Fifty-nine says a part-time manager will be on site during normal business hours. Not all business, normal business hours, but during business hours and the typical hours shall be posted in the lobby. That there'll be a twenty-four hour, seven day a week emergency answering service available for tenants. And complaints by the public is set forth in the management plan. Sixty deals with the residential services counselor, a coordinator position. We reduce that pursuant to the discussion at the last meeting from thirty-two to twenty-seven point five to thirty, an average of twenty-seven point five to thirty hours a week. And that those responsibilities of the RCS RSC would be are laid out in the supportive services plan. Sixty-one provides for backup for the resident services counselor, sixty-two is residential, the space in the building is used for the interest of the and benefits of the residents of the project. Sixty-three says you got to require, got to comply with the residential rental property bylaw. Sixty-four deals with cameras, sixty-five refuse recyclable being set aside. Sixty-six deals requires tenants to adhere to off-street loading and unloading criteria. Sixty-seven requires residential leases be a minimum of twelve months and that the lease should be submitted to the board for review and conformance with the requirements of the comprehensive permit. Sixty-eight parking for onsite residents and residential visitors shall be managed through a part permitting slash sticker program as described in the parking management plan. Questions, concerns, or amendments to conditions fifty-six through sixty-eight? We'll now deal with condition sixty-nine through eighty-four. First sixty-nine deals with signs, the fire department in charge of the applicable seat address and identification units. And the construction identification sign shall be as installed as shown on the project plans that we received from the applicant this week. Seventy-one says we got to meet all building code requirements, seventy-two says we got to meet all with the all accessibility codes. Seventy-three says visitors shall be that each unit shall be visitable, that means, you know, able for people with mobility impairments to visit the units. Seventy-four allows the requires the state building plumbing code to be used. Seventy-five, the interior of the building shall be smoke-free. There's a designated smoking area, an open air pavilion. Seventy-six mechanical equipment is would be screened, seventy-seven is enforcement of the parking management plan. Eight seventy-eight is building serviced by fully operational elevators. Eighty seventy-nine is dwelling units are confined spaces have sprinklers. Windows have to be open and eighty eighty-one is demolition of existing structures and shown in the demolition project plan. Eighty eighty-two, the applicant shall work with the fire department to get a Knox box. Inspection services shall have responsibility for assigning address and units numbers. And eighty-four is the applicant shall present the details for all proposed fuel storage to the fire department and obtain the fire department's approval. Any question? Comments or amendments to condition sixty-nine through eighty-four? Okay, I had, I had none, looks like we don't have any from anybody else. We'll deal with conditions eighty-five through eighty-nine. Eighty-five is the comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without the approval from the board. And any proposal to transfer a sign shall be deemed a substantial change, and that means it's got to come back to us. Eighty-six deals with providing supportive services for at least the initial stabilization period. Eighty-seven deals with the tenant selection process shall be presented to the board for the board's approval. Eighty-eight says any slope has to be that finished grade in excess of the natural angle, but no slope can be in excess of the natural angle of proposed when finished. And eighty-nine is all filled areas that were not built upon within one year. Upon completion of the operation, she'll be covered by four inches of lumen brought up to finish grade mulched and seated in a satisfactory manner. Are there any questions, comments, or amendments to eighty-five through eighty-nine? First, I want to get anybody from the board, Ms. Hardy, before we go to the applicant. I have one comment when we on number eighty-six. I think it's great that that the applicant shall coordinate services for the initial stabilization period. But in the supportive services plan, I think you talked about having services available after that if if tenants, especially tenants in the homeless preference units requested or needed them and that you'd be available that the residents, one of the job of the residence service residence services counselor would per person would be to help provide that. And so what I wanted to do to my suggestion is that we add the words at the end of that first sentence. And and at the end of the initial stabilization period shall offer supportive services, shall offer continued supportive services from service providers. So what I'm trying to get at is that it doesn't end at twelve months to the extent that there are people in the homeless preference units that could benefit from additional services and they ask you for them. It would be good if you would, at the end of the initial stabilization period, let them know that those services are available. And then it's up to them to whether or not they can, whether or not they want to avail themselves of those units of those services.
Repeat that, that quote.
Let me try it again. So after the word occupancy, before the sentence, before the period, add and at the end of the initial stabilization period shall offer continued support from service providers. So it requires the applicant to coordinate support in the first six to twelve months and in the same same way offer that to people at the end of the initial stabilization period. Comment from Ms. Baker and then Ms. Hardy?
I think we're on the same page, just a semantic thing, so the resident service coordinator coordinate services, they don't do direct clinical services. So that we would, after the stabilization period, we shall continue to offer coordination of social service, social services.
Right, it says that I'm just adding an additional period to the end, that at the end of the initial stabilization period shall offer or continue to offer support from service providers.
Coordination of support from service providers, yeah.
Offer coordination of support, shall offer coordination of support, okay?
That's awesome, thank you.
All right, instead of continued. Ms. Hardy?
I was going to make the same point that Ms. Baker just made. But I also wanted to bring to the board's attention an issue with item eighty-five when you're ready to talk about that. So sorry, just if I'm hearing you correctly, so at the end of that sentence, it would say, and at the end of the initial stabilization period, the applicant shall provide, shall provide, can, shall provide continued coordinated supportive services continued, sorry.
You can take out continued.
Okay, continue.
Take out continued, shall offer coordinated support from service providers.
Okay, I got it, yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay. So I move that we amend condition eighty-six as just described. If we need to see that on, if people need to see that on paper, we can probably draft it up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion on the motion to amend condition eighty-six? If not, the vote occurs on the motion. It's a roll call vote, I vote aye, Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous, five to nothing, it's unanimous and the motion carries. Ms. Hardy, you had a question, you had a suggestion?
Yes, Mr. Judge, thank you. So on item eighty-five that prohibits Valley or applicant from transferring or assigning the comprehensive permit, it is almost certain that as part of the financing, Valley CDC is going to be forming a single purpose entity to own the project. That entity will, among other things, receive the low income housing tax credits, which is the sort of the key piece of the financing for this project. So I would like to ask that the board consider some language, and I think I had offered some in a prior draft, which I'm not sure if it got to Maureen or not, so my apologies if it did, but I think we ought to add a exception to this non-trans, this non-assignment clause that contemplates that we are going to be assigning the permit to the entity that is going to be formed to actually own the project and receive the financing.
Just reading, I'm going over the existing condition right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Whitten?
If this is, if this is helpful, that that's a perfectly acceptable suggestion. And so what the board might consider is with the sole exception being the sole exception of permitting the transfer of this comprehensive permit to a single purpose entity. Then continue this comprehensive permit shall not be transferred or assigned. So if if the board is comfortable with that, which is that that is certainly acceptable, you could carve out that singular exception.
All right, Maureen, do you have that?
I think so.
Okay. So can you read it back to us? I think we just, I think John is suggesting we just add words at the beginning. Is that the sentence, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Actually, Attorney Whitten, could you?
Sure, absolutely, of course, Maureen. With the sole exception of the transfer of this comprehensive permit to a single purpose entity established by Valley CDC, comma, this comprehensive permit, then continue from there, Maureen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I move we amend condition eighty-five as described by John, by Mr. Whitten. And as written by Ms. Pollack to add words at the beginning of eighty-five. Is, is there a second? Discussion, anybody have any questions about what's being proposed? It's suitable to the applicant?
Yes, that works fine, Mr. Judge, thanks very much.
Good. Any further discussion? If not, vote occurs on the motion to amend condition eighty-five. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. So amended. Any other condition, any other amendments, discussions about conditions eighty-five through eighty-nine? So we've reached the end of the conditions that are set before us. If there are other conditions that members of the board wish to propose at this time, this is the time to do that. You don't have to, I mean, you don't have to have it relate to the last miscellaneous provisions or other provisions and other conditions, but this is the time to add any additional conditions or to amend any of the conditions that we've dealt with. Catch-all provision opportunity for everybody. All right. The the motion before, the next order of business is to approve the conditions as amended tonight's meeting. So I move that we approve the conditions as amended by tonight's board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now's discussion on the conditions. And the motion to approve those conditions.
Mr. Chairman, might I just add? And I apologize if I'm interrupting anyone's question. If if as part of the board's motion, if the board would grant permission to staff and that would include me to make any scrivener's errors or other insignificant, non-substantial changes between when the board votes and when the board executes the decision, I think that would be very helpful.
That's a good catch, John, so I would amend my motion to authorize staff to make technical and conforming changes. And any correct any scrivener's errors between now and when the the decision is filed.
Mr. Chair, procedurally, we need to second that amendment and then vote on the
Yep, I thought I had a second, but I probably could have been any of the other votes, but I need a second, I guess. Mr. Maxfield, do I have one? All right, good. I've had a lot of seconds tonight, I can't, I forgot whether I had one for this or not. All right, discussion on it. All right, if there's no further discussion, the motion occurs, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions with authorization for staff to make technical and conforming and scrivener's changes to the conditions between now and the filing of the document. Roll call vote is required, I vote aye, Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. O'Meara?
Aye.
Ms. Parks? Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
All right. Motion is unanimous. The conditions are approved. So I would like to get the consensus of the board. Do we feel we're ready to make a decision on the, the final decision on the application tonight? I don't think there's been significant enough, I don't think there's been significant enough changes to the document that we need to have the document amended, sent back to us and have an open, continue the meeting till, and have another vote on this. I think we have gone through the, the changes, the amendments. I think we've, in most cases, identified the exact language we want to use. And we've authorized the staff to fix any technical and conforming mistakes that were made. So I'm ready to proceed, but I want to make sure that the rest of the board is comfortable before we do that. And if somebody isn't, it's a good, this is a good point to raise the question. So then what the next motion will be to close the public hearing on ZBA 2020 and move to then, yes.
Ms. Breastrop is raising her hand.
Oh, Ms. Breastrop, I didn't see. Yes.
I just wondered if you had any intention of allowing any further public comment because that had been brought up by Mr. Langsdale earlier in the meeting.
We do have one, I was, I've been observing here, we do have one request for a public hearing. This is the last opportunity for it. So it's a good catch.
Ms. Pam?
I forgot it. Ms. Pam?
Well, I'm quite confused about the matter of the staffing. I thought that through all the public hearings that we had, that it was agreed upon that between 27 and 35 hours, and I think it's down to 27 now, of, of a coordinator, a person, a person on site was going to be there, but it sounds tonight as if that's only for the initial six to 12 months. And I, I think the statement unless people ask for it is very weak. People who need help often don't ask for it, but they need help. And this is assuming that people come in and that nobody moves, there's no changeover and that you get a bunch of people and they come in and then they stay there for 10 years. But I don't think that's how it's going to be. So I, I was pretty, I saw that you were trying to pin the language down a little bit. But it just, that could be interpreted as a way to just walk out and just say, okay, we've done it, we've adjusted. It's over and now we don't have to have this person here anymore. And then the thing that the community fought very hard for that condition. And it seems as if now it's just going to be a will of the wisp. So I, I'm not happy about that. I had no problems with anything else that you were discussing tonight. It was all practical and things that you talked about and things you had to do and had to deal with, but this is the topic that people that stopped me in the street and talk about and email me about. So I'm, I'm kind of concerned about it.
Ms. Pam, if I might respond, I think there's a couple of things. Number one, they will be required to have a RSC on staff on campus between 20, for an average of between 27 and 30 hours a week. That will continue for the length of the program. So that will be there. They also if a client comes and comes in, there's the initial stabilization period for a person that they offer them, they offer them services during that initial stabilization period. The amendment we had tonight said they also have to continue to offer that at the end of the initial stabilization period and make that, make those services available to that client for the rest of their, for the rest of their tenancy. They can, they can coordinate those services. They won't provide the services themselves, but the service providers that they contract with or who are following that client from the when they were assigned or when they were, became a tenant, will continue to provide services if the client chooses to have those services during the entire tenancy, if they choose. I think that's right. Is it not, Ms. Baker? Or did I miss, misinterpreted? Because I, I agree with Ms. Pam's concern. I think it's that we want services to people who want services as long as the building is there.
I think the issue is people are hearing the discussion, but they may not see everything that's written down. So I'm going to read the relevant section to address Ms. Pam's question. So it says, this is a condition that was just voted on. The resident services coordinator position shall be employed pursuant to a written contract for an average of 27 and a half to 30 hours per week. In no week shall there be less than 25 hours of employment for the resident services coordinator. The responsibilities of the resident service coordinator shall be as described in the approved supportive services plan. The responsibilities, duties and hours of the resident services coordinator should not be substantially changed without approval of the board. The next section says the applicant shall provide for qualified backup coverage in the case of absence of the resident services coordinator. So I think because we had reviewed this at the prior meeting, it wasn't something we went over line by line tonight. But I think that's the key condition that relates to the concern that Ms. Pam was raising.
Can I follow up briefly?
Yes, Ms. Pam.
Okay. I teach at Holyoke Community College and I'm teaching remotely and I notice there's a great difference. I, my, my students are coming to my classes even eight o'clock and all that is going well, they're doing their work. But when I was on campus and in an office during certain periods of the week, people dropped by, people came in. And in the course of conversation, I would discover they would share problems that they were having. But now that they have to email me or speak up at the end of the Zoom meeting to say, can I speak to you privately or whatever, they're not doing that. So I just think there's a great value in having somebody on site just so that people walk by, that the clients walk by and they say, oh, I'll just ask this person, ask her about that for the informal kind of interchange. But if it's, when it's requesting service, we all know that we don't like to ask for help. And if we have to make a big to do about it, we don't do it. So I, I just hope that there'll be, the onsite service coordinator will be preserved perhaps with changes, but still continue onsite hours, even if nobody has formally requested that.
Yes, they will. If I may, Ms. Pam, yes, they will. They're, they're going to, they have 30 hour, average of 30 hours a week, they'll be performing services, performing their, their functions. And we laid out those, the responsibilities for the, the coordinator are pretty well laid out and pretty detailed. And I think in viewing them and getting information from other sources regarding what is typical in supportive housing settings, we have a very, very robust offering of services and personnel dedicated to providing that on to 10 and maybe more clients, but at least to 10 clients. So the services are pretty, are extremely robust as far as these kinds of houses, units are concerned. And I, and they are, will be provided there in onsite, coordinated there onsite, excuse me.
And to add, if the applicant, you know, in the future wishes to reduce the amount of hours or the roles or responsibilities, that would be a modification of, of the comprehensive permit, which would require ZBA review and approval. Sounds good.
Yep. So the board, the board felt really strongly about that as well, just like, it sounds like you do as well. The board felt very strongly about that. Thank you. Are there other public comments? Okay. If there are no public comments, no further comments from members of the board, I move that we, the vote occurs on the motion, which is to close a public hearing on ZBA 2020, the Valley Community Development Corporation located at 132 North Hampton Road. I think I had a second. Did I not, Dylan?
If not, I'm giving you a second now.
I think I already did, but if I got one now, all right. Is there any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to, oh, I just would say one thing. By closing this public hearing, we start the clock, which is from this, we have 14 days from closing this hearing. Is that right? Forty days?
No, Mr. Chairman, 40 days from the close of the hearing and then 14 days to record your decision once you vote.
Got it. So we have, this causes us to, to, and you, you're able to meet that, are you not, Maureen? If you're not, let us know.
I, I am. Yeah. Well, Attorney Whitten, are we?
Yes, we are.
All right. So we're starting the clock and by doing this, all right, the vote is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
The vote is five ayes and zero nays. The motion is approved. The public hearing on the comprehensive permit is now closed. We now move to the public meeting consideration of the comprehensive permit. As you know, the public meeting is when the board deliberates and is generally not a time for public comment or comment from the applicant. So I would put the, the motion before the board. I move that the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals approves a comprehensive permit, ZBA 2020, Valley Community Development Corporation located at 132 North Hampton Road, as described in the decision document, as amended, approved by the board earlier this evening at its public hearing. Materials referenced in that approved decision document, the revised permit plan set dated 10/22/2020 and the parking management plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Parks, second to the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the comprehensive permit? Okay. If there is no further discussion, the roll call occurs on the vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
The vote is five ayes and zero nays. The motion is approved. Comprehensive permit is approved. And before we move on to the last part of this, of the meeting, which is a public comment portion of the meeting that we have, I just want to compliment Valley CDC for their work in putting together this application. It responds to an urgent need in our town for affordable housing that really has to be met. And this is a good project to do that. The town will be well served by the success of this project and we appreciate it. I also want to thank the community for their involvement. Many people were engaged in this project long before we were engaged at the ZBA, the town council, working with you, bringing the valid CDC into the town. That's public, that's staff, it's everybody. And they, they really deserve a lot of credit. And I want the, the public to know that the comments that they provided us really did inform our decision. And it made it a better decision. So we appreciate that. Next, I want to compliment our outside counsel, John Whitten. Thank you very much for the work you've done and for the work the law, done at the law firm, KP Law Firm. And lastly, I want to compliment the town staff, Chris Breastrop, Rob Mora, Dave Waskevich, and especially Maureen Pollak, who spent her last four months doing all things 40B. She's been consumed by that even more than we have. And I don't think this board has ever, this group of members have ever had a comprehensive permit before, with the exception of Keith Langsdale, who's had, who's done one of these before. But I don't think we could have done it without all your work, Maureen, or without, without all the work of the town staff. So thank you very much. Applause to you guys. Great job. Thank you all. And lastly, thanks to my, the other members of the board. Each and every one of you contributed, each and every one of you did a lot to help this get done on time. And I think we all made it a better application. So thank you to Keith, to Joan, to Tammy, to Dylan, and to Sharon, who was always standing ready if we needed her at every one of these meetings, even though we didn't hear from her. So all of you, thank you, thank you very much. You did a great job. I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much to the board members and staff.
Mr. Maxfield, you have your hand up?
I, I do. I just have to say, I echo, I echo all of your thank yous, but I, I have to say a big thank you to you, Mr. Chair. You took on the role of chair with a pretty green new board with a lot of experience here and then jumping right into a comprehensive permit. I can't say it's necessarily an enviable position, but you did really a great job at, at leading the team here. So I, I thank you for that very much. So.
Very kind. Couldn't have done it without you guys. You made it easy. Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To all of you.
Thank you.
Last order of business is public comments before the, on any matter that's not before the board tonight. Is there any, Maureen, do we have anybody who, yes, it looks like we have somebody with their hand up. Ms. Greenbaum?
I just want to say, and this is related to tonight, I think you should go crack a few bottles of champagne. It's been a long haul. For me, I think. Anyway, go enjoy, go celebrate. Something good.
You know, this is, if I may respond to that, Ms. Greenbaum, if it wasn't for the damn pandemic, I think I'd be buying everybody your favorite drink at a local watering hole and we would celebrate. But I guess we'll have to wait till we can all meet in a bar.
You can celebrate six feet apart.
We could. All right. Well, thank you all. Congratulations. You all did a great job. I appreciate all your help and we, we look forward to this wonderful project and we look forward to the help you have the town. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
One thing, unfortunately, the show goes on, the ZBA continues. So the next, next meeting is November 12th. And so I'll be sending out an email for non-40B projects.
And is that at 6:30?
It is.
Okay, 6:30 on November 12th is the next meeting? Okay. Mr. Maxfield, did you have your hands raised?
Do. I was going to now make the motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second? Ms. Parks, is there, is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Actually, you can't discuss the motion to adjourn. That's the whole point of it. Motion, the vote occurs on the motion to adjourn. All, it's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Mr. Langsdale?
Aye.
Ms. Omira?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. It's unanimous. Motion is adjourned. All right. Good night, folks.